Alright, good morning everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is December, or December first, two thousand twenty-two. Sorry for a little delay, we have September again. Let's call the meeting in order. It is ten twenty-two AM. Mike, you want to do your own call?
Yes Chairman. District one?
Here.
District two?
Here.
District three?
Here.
And I'm here.
Yeah, we have a question, McGwich. We don't have no meeting minutes at this time. We'll have them at the end of the month meeting. Calendar review, we kinda went over that while we were we were waiting for the computer to get fixed, but I think we got that situated. I know there's some conflicts on the schedule, but we're working around them. Would there be more stuff that we more events that we were planning? We'll be on our website and also check our Facebook page if you have any questions on that too, so. Alright, I guess we'll have to go back to the review and approval of the agenda. I know we had a few items that we were gonna add to this, and Antonio, what was one of them?
We have ratified the county letter from our public safety department. And we have a request for an executive session agenda item. And I'd also like to add one to the executive session item as well.
Okay, good. And everyone else, what was the other ones?
I would, I wanna move the, I wanna move the community council meeting stipends discussion to the executive session.
Annie, did you have another one?
Oh, I think he covered it.
Okay.
You? Yeah. Okay.
Okay, one, do we do the flag thing?
Yes, we need to ratify the
We add the flag donation to
New business?
Yes, City of Bemidji.
City of Bemidji. That can go right on, new business, huh?
Yeah. Alright, what we're gonna, what we're gonna talk about next is old business. We're gonna, what we're having a meeting today is we're amending our moratorium on the feedlots, the concentrated animal operations, the CAFOs, and I guess, Antonio, do you want?
Yeah, we're doing technical amendments. Make sure Ms. Conapac is on, I believe she's
Is that just?
Then send it to her. Yeah, I sent it to her.
Yes, she's
Antonio.
There she is.
Yeah, there she is.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Yep, so as Antonio said, there was a small amendment that I wanted to make, as we talked about at length last time. These huge battery farms pose two really big water threats. One of them is the quantity of water they use. For instance, the proposed CAFO on the Southwest Florida Revolution, the ZERN operation has asked INR for four point four million gallons a year. The proposed dairy CAFO will probably be close to thirty million gallons a year. It's a lot of water. So in addition to talking about environmental hazards that are dictated by water pollution, we wanted to talk about environmental hazards dictated by the quantity of water being used. So in, if folks have the resolution in front of them, I don't know, can I share my screen or do you have copies there, Antonio?
Yes, they have copies.
Okay, great. So on page number two, in the second, we're at pause.
Excuse me, Jamie, I'm sorry. I have to interrupt for one second, please. Mr. Chairman, we would just like to call to your attention that we need to approve the agenda before moving forward.
Yeah, we missed it. Come on. Sorry about that.
Alright, motion to approve the agenda. With the, with the additions. Motion by Annie.
Second.
Second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, Jamie, my apologies. And?
No worries.
And calendar review is good then?
Thank you, Jamie.
Is that your key, Chairman?
Yeah, you can keep going.
Okay. Great. So on page two, on the second, we're at pause. We go one, two, three, four, five, the sixth line down. We talked about two different types of environmental hazards, and the word that was added was depletion. So that if you are one of these operations that's just below the federal threshold, which is what the ZERN operation is doing, oftentimes these CAFOs will say, well, we're only nine hundred and ninety-nine animal units, and they know the federal threshold is a thousand, so they're trying to get away with not using food. So this clause captures those operations that are still big environmental risks because of the potential to deplete groundwater or to pollute ground or surface water. And so I just needed to add that word to make it explicit. It was already discussed in the the moratorium ordinance below, the needs to study and to assess both water quantity and water quality in order to develop appropriate regulations that will protect tribal members and environmental health. So it was that minor technical amendment there and added some commas. And then if you'll go down to page four, section five point one, right at the bottom. I added a little bit to that first sentence. Just to say that we're gonna undertake extensive study and assessment as part of regulatory control development. So very minor things. I just want this to be as ironclad as possible. I believe it's really strong. And now that we've got outside council on assisting me, I've got an extra set of eyes. So we feel, we feel confident moving forward regarding the issues of these regulations under under this resolution as amended if the, if the committee accepts it. I think that's all I've got unless anybody has any questions, Chairman or Antonio or representative.
I, I do have just a, a few, I just want authorization as, that are related to this CAFO resolution. We have two notices that need to go out, one to Spring Creek Township, one to Becker County. And then we have a notice to the ZERNs that will come from our Division Director Dustin Roy. I just wanna get authorization from the RBC to be able to, Chairman.
Well, I have the notice, and Antonio, sorry to interrupt you, the third letter that the Chairman was gonna sign earlier was the, went to the agency. So we'll notify
Yes, they do.
Control Agency, Department of Natural Resources, Department of Agriculture, as well as the county and the township. And they're pretty much identical in format, just putting people on notice that we passed the the resolution and the moratorium ordinance. And that we request they respect the exercise of power and authority and don't take any permanent action or other action that's inconsistent with our new law. So there's three letters, three, three of identical notice letters, and then, like you said, there's one determination to the ZERN stopping them to stop construction because the moratorium applies to them.
Any discussion on that council?
I just wanna, if I may, Mr. Chair, that, you know, in the future, I know this is kind of a emergency thing because it's happening pretty quick. But in the future, if we can put this out to our members before we approve, because I know that's something that we didn't do.
I think it is, it was on the website, wasn't it?
Did post the resolution as it was passed, yes. But I think Ms. Jackson is referring to a comment period.
Yeah.
So it, it is for the purposes, because of the emergency circumstances, or yes, you are correct, we should offering comment periods. We'll try to do that in a time and fashion, so.
McGwich.
Dusty?
I just wanted to clarify, Spring Creek, Becker County, what was the state name?
Pollution Control, Ms. Jamie, is pollution control Department of Agriculture?
Department of
And Department of Natural Resources.
Department of Natural Resources. Okay.
They're all involved in different ways with these operations, which is part of the operation of people that are opposing them, and you you often have to deal with three different agencies on three different timelines. I think the Secretary Treasurer mentioned at our last meeting when we first considered the resolution. The INR will control the high-capacity wells for the operation, pollution control agency controls kind of the operation permit, usually either an SBS or a NIP use permit. And then Department of Agriculture sometimes comes in on the backend with different chemical stuff or yeah, plans for crop management and nutrient management. But I think it's just, it's good practice because they all touched the issue to notify all of them. And, and then, you know, Becker County as well, because they're taking actions impacting us in terms of the cup determination, the NIP use permit. And then the township has actually been very communicative and their lawyer has been discussing with us openly their, their concerns regarding these same facilities. So we'll just put everybody kind of from top to bottom on notice, on formal notice, because otherwise they might not be aware that we passed this law prohibiting these kinds of operations from reservation.
Discussion council?
Those are just the two amendments, correct?
Yeah. I'm on some, I think.
And we're gonna address, in the future, we're gonna address eighteen fifty-five treaty stuff?
Yeah.
With this?
It'll probably have to go where I want it.
Cause this is not added to it, eighteen fifty-five?
Yeah, they'll have, they'll have to adopt the same stuff that we're doing.
Okay.
Alright, motion to approve the, how do you say it again, the, that's amend the
Amend the resolution, motion to approve the technical amendments to the resolution number zero five seven two three zero zero six. And then in separate vote, approve, a motion to authorize the issuance of these
Okay, let's do the first one. Motion to the technical amendments to the feedlot moratorium. Zero five seven dash two three dash zero zero six. Motion, motion by Mike?
I have
Motion by Henry, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Our next, next motion will be to approve the
Four letters?
Four notice letters.
Four notice letters to the township, the owner, NPC
Becker County.
Becker County and
State agencies.
And the state agencies.
Motion.
Motion by Annie.
Second.
Second by Henry, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, McGwich, and thank you, Jamie, for the hard work, and thank you, team. I think that putting these farms on their notice, I think it's a good thing for us, affect our water. So, McGwich. Alright, next up on the agenda.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, get a say in his own.
Yeah.
Hey, Dusty, go ahead.
I'll get in there.
The president signing letters. To get him some security.
Yeah. Great for Dusty's.
I'll give this to Maria.
What's that one?
That's Dusty's too. You already see the signos under there?
Okay, this must be the back of this. Mr. LaRocque, the same as that?
Guys.
See ya.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good day.
That's your cup.
My morning. Terrible.
Signature.
My morning signature. Alright, Tony, you're next up for the eighth fire?
Uh, yeah, so, um, we all met with Eight Fire Solar, I believe, a week ago. And they presented a project for, a solar project on Pine Point School. Believe everyone was in support of it at the meeting. What they requested was letters of support from the RBC. There were multiple app grant applications that they're going to pursue. The first one up is time sensitive. They have a, a deadline of December fifth. So that's the letter that I'd like to get you guys to approve today as a letter of support for that, for Eight Fire Solar to a grant application for energy improvements in rural or remote areas. Letters supporting your guys' documents, so. That support that, the, have Chairman sign that letter on behalf of the RBC.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, please.
And I know Eugene is probably gonna ask too, so we wanna make sure that when we, when we do this resolution or this letter, we do we wanna make sure that we were not crossing boundaries, they're not applying for something that we'd be applying for and stuff like that. So when we did meet with, when we met with them, there was a a clear message that we wanted to collaborate and not go against each other. So, and stuff like that. So that, that was one of our concerns, and Eugene, I don't know if you wanna comment a little more on it, what we talked about?
Can you repeat that?
No, remember we talked about the eighth fire, that the letter and the resolution they needed for the grant for the fifth, for December fifth? And we made, we, we had some, we had some concerns about them applying for same grants that we're applying for and stuff like that, so you had some concerns with that?
Yep, yeah, I, let's see, I'll have to check when, cause Jacob set up the time to meet with them and to go over all the Inflation Reduction Act funding that they're applying for, McGwich. I know I saw an email on it, but, um, I think that was, that was my only concern, that I didn't wanna pursue the same funding. But I, I think, I mean, we, we give letters of support to other individuals, so as soon as we, as soon as they meet with Jacob, and Jacob gives us the okay, I'm fine with it then.
I, I do have an update, Mr. Chairman, Secretary. Um, I did speak with our Economic Development Director specifically about support for all the grant funding that they're going to be applying for. Again, we discussed the issue of whether we could potentially be in competition for same grant funding. So we decided that just this first grant fund our Economic Development Director indicated that we were not going to pursue that particular funding just because of the short timeframes. So it was okay for the, the ban to support Eight Fire Solar's pursuing that particular grant. Mr. McArthur does have a meeting with Eight Fire Solar tomorrow to go over all the other grants that they're gonna be applying for, so we're really just gonna wait. Those grants will come in, you know, ad hoc, and as they come in, so.
So, so the letter is just supporting for the fifth?
Right, for the fifth.
Thing, yeah, that's, that's what we wanted, yeah.
And then there's no resolution, it's just a, it's by motion.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion on the on the support letter?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve it.
Motion by Annie to approve the support letter for Eighth Fire Solar for the Pine Point School. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Michael LaRocque, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, McGwich. Alright, then we had a couple other things on here. What was the other ones we added to this part here?
Mr. Chairman, under new business, we added two ratifications. One was to ratify the flag, and the other one was
Okay, okay.
To ratify the Beltrami County Jail support letter.
Yeah. Okay, next up is testimony, written testimony for Legal Executive Director Lori York to the US DHS Administration and Children and Families, the ACF.
So, Mr. Chairman, I had provided oral testimony in Sacramento during the tribal legislative summit. We also have an opportunity to provide written testimony to ACF regarding the Family First Prevention Services Act. This information was sent out at the same time. I'm not cer- certain if this just needs to be a ratification of, of that prior approval, prior to my oral testimony? Or if this needs to be a new approval for the written testimony to be submitted, so that is what is being brought to our tribal leaders' attention today. In addition to the FFPSA testimony, there was also testimony provided from our Child Support Department that I had covered during their oral testimony that is also included in the document for the, the written testimony to be submitted. The deadline of that submission is today. And then, yeah, I guess that's it, McGwich.
Okay, any questions on the the testimony?
This is the deadline, stay on this.
Yep.
Motion to approve the testimony to move forward with being submitted today.
I will make the motion, Mr. Chair.
By Annie.
Second.
Second by Henry, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Next up is Mike LaRocque being nominated for the Tribal Interior Budget Council Letter. Put him on, on the TPC committee.
Motion.
Motion by Annie.
Second.
Second by Henry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, next up is the Whiter's Twenty Twenty Four Christmas Toy Program, Whiter's Urban Teen Gift Cards and Service Area Discussion. Was that, was that something that we were gonna talk about today, guys?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so as, as it pertains to the gift cards, on the Christmas gift cards, the request from the Urban Council was to provide service per county rather than a service area. Some of those requests extend out to a hundred miles from the urban office, so there's a discussion request. If you, if you look at the paperwork, those that are in red are not, or if we go by mileage are out of the service area. However, the, the advise, the Urban Council has, in their bylaws, a boundary of county boundaries rather than a mileage-based boundaries. So that is the request that's being brought forward for discussion and consideration on how you want to proceed. McGwich, thank you.
So their bylaws cover these ones that are further away? Actually?
What Shar had stated to us is that in, in their bylaws, they service these counties. Second.
Well, my thought on it is if they're enrolled children, I say do it because they, you know.
And then, then that brings us back here to Whiter. And then we have families that are off reservation here, so what do we do about our children that live in Detroit Lakes? Or live
I have, they had a meeting, the Community Council in Whiter had a meeting, and they're going to extend it out to them this year because it's like, how do we not provide? Cause some of them have eight children, five children, and, you know, they're all enrolled.
Then that brings me back to our community councils that we already shot for, like Rice Lake, we could've did Bagley. And then Pine Point, we could've did Osage and Park Rapids.
Pine Point, actually, I talked to them, and they said that they have been doing it every year anyway. They don't leave nobody out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's a discussion that you guys, if you wanna extend this to this area here, I'm just following what was done in the past.
And I think
The inconsistency.
When it's adjusted to Castle, cause they wanna do the same thing for Bemidji. And I said, you gotta do it in your bylaws. That's why, hopefully all the community councils will add their service areas and their, and update their bylaws, so. And probably get us some data or some information on how much they're gonna So it gives, it gives our team here some type of number that we're gonna have to work with next year. So it's important, but it's good to hear the other community councils are, are going above and beyond, so.
And I know like with Pine Point, they said, you know, these families that they do serve have always lived in Pine Point, and, you know, they moved for their own
They, yeah, utilize their funding, and I'm just kinda wondering, like, cause we do the general fund here, so, and then
I don't know how the rest of the
The calls.
And for urban, we only do the teen gift cards, so the kids that have, the families that got signed up, they have kids that are under the age of thirteen to seventeen. And those kids won't get anything. And it'll be just the teens that receive the gift cards, which is those ones.
The thirteen to seventeen?
Yep.
So the younger kids don't get nothing?
Alan donated last year out of his own budget for toys for the younger kids there. But, yep, it's always been only gift cards for our urban area. Because then if you look at those service areas, that's, that's really expanding, if we're gonna go off a hundred and seven miles for some members out there, and then that, then you look, then should we be adding our Morehead members?
They signed up. I mean, you know, we can't not
Right.
Force them to sign up either, you know?
So.
I don't think we should be leaving any children out because it's
And I think we should, we probably should talk about this more probably in Monday and find out, get some numbers from Mike and Tracy and see what, what, what we can do, so.
Mr. Chairman, we, we met with the, we, we had, we met with the community councils yesterday, the chairmans and the secretary treasurers. And we had some, some good discussion and we had some, some, not really, some, some negative stuff too, but it was it all turned out to be pretty good because we were looking for solutions. I know with Curtis and Lori and Tracy and myself, we all I think we came to some solutions, but that was one of the things that I don't think we came to a solution on, is service areas. And one of the things that we mentioned is that we, we would like to service all of our members across the United States, actually, not just Minnesota, but across the United States, but we, we talked about some financial stuff and how we can do that financially and stuff like that, so. But I mean, I think that's an open discussion for us to sit down as the council and look at at service areas for our urban office, for our range, riding range, and our Castle Lake offices. Because I know we're missing a lot of members. Do we, do we allow the, the Castle Lake office? One of their questions was, is that they wanted, they, if they went twenty-five miles from their building, that would include Bemidji too, and that's, that's a big we got a lot of membership in the City of Bemidji, in Bemidji, in Beltrami County areas and stuff like that, so we have to come to a happy medium as to whether we wanna create more community councils? Or we wanna extend their service areas? Because I know Morehead is also, I mean, who's gonna ser, who's gonna service Morehead? I know there's a lot of members in Morehead, Fargo-Morehead area too, so. I think that's a, that's a, we're not gonna solve it this year, but we'll probably, that'll be a, a topic of discussion for next year and stuff like that, to be prepared. We got a whole year to do it, so. Thank you.
McGwich, thank you.
I just have a question. Do we have the walking shield toys coming?
Yeah.
This year?
They're in the maintenance garage.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And we're just waiting, waiting for our second one. And with our walking shield, we go off our numbers from the previous year, so we can get it in right away?
Yeah. And one of the things that I've heard about in the past is I've heard that with the walking shield toys and the other toys, it seemed like we have an ex, an excess. We have an excess, and I know, I mean, I know last year we had an excess of toys that we sent back, sent over to Castle Lake. And then, I mean, maybe we can, we can do a little better at maybe with our excess toys, maybe sending them down to the urban office and servicing some of the children down there. That's just an idea and stuff like that, so.
No.
I think it's only nine, isn't it? It's only nine extra? Or eleven extra? That's what it says here, it's, there's only eleven extra. Cause I, cause they get eighty, they eighty-five without counting the service area, ninety-six with counting it, so that's, that's eleven, that's eleven.
They have a hundred and seventy-five kids that are under age thirteen. It's up to you guys.
No, no, I'm talking about this, this, if we could, these gift cards, cause we gotta, we gotta kinda come up and but we gotta deal with that today.
Finance order them and
It's opening, basically what it's doing is, in my opinion only, is it's opening, I can't, it is, it's opening, I can't for all the other areas, so, but I mean, if we wanna do that today, that's, that's, that's up to us today, so. Like, like Annie said, I would, I would hate to leave members out.
Well, so, so what's the proper way, Antonio, is to have the urban amender service area, so we can, so we can accept these?
If the, the urban community council needs to amend their bylaws.
Excuse, excuse, excuse me, second. They, they, that's already in their bylaws already. That's just that they, there, somebody told them that they only had a twenty-mile radius. Somebody, because of Toys for Tots. For the For the Christmas toy program, it was
They, they're able to service whoever
Yeah, they can service any, anybody they want, so this is something that, I, I don't know why it's at our table really, but I mean, they could, it's in their bylaws.
Wanna get clarification.
Clarification, yeah.
Clarification.
Oh, yeah, well, they, they get service ever they want.
And that's, we told them yesterday, is when we talked to Shar, we said that they, if their bylaws say they're servicing all these people, that's fine, but if we have to follow Toys for Tots rules, we, we can't.
Yeah, that's what
Yeah.
Is there policies on Toys for Tots?
I believe there is, yeah.
There, we, and we've always just thought of what was done
Prior?
High to us, and I'm sure if I search, maybe they have something, however. It's just what we were always told, and how far are we going out to? By to us. And I'm sure if I search, maybe they have something, however, it's just what we were always told and how far are we going out to service.
Yeah, the, Mr. Chair, yeah, the main, the main issue here is that if for years we kept it on reservation and it was not allowed to cover the other areas, and then urban has it in their bylaws to service out a hundred and seven miles. Therefore, it, it creates a discrepancy, so our, our staff is looking for, um, direction and clarity so it can be consistent and fair throughout. Make which.
And then, Mr. Chairman, uh, the, the Iron Range Council, they, their bylaws say twenty-five miles. They, they, they say twenty-five miles.
Cause the same thing that we could follow is Chishta, which is twenty-five miles in or on our border, or Terrell, which I think is even farther, isn't it? I mean, we could use those measurements of like that to, to clarify who we're gonna serve.
But one, but, but one of the, oh, excuse me, second. But one of the things is that on our urban offices, they don't know where the twenty-five mile starts. Does it start from their community center? Does it start from the border of whatever? Or does it start here? That was their question last night, so.
And that's gonna have to be, probably clarified by their community council. They're gonna have to declare.
Well, can't we get some, um, clear policies for To- Toys for Tots written and then give them to the community councils and they can go off that when they do their by, or, when they're looking at their bylaws? I don't know. You know, something needs to come to head here so that everybody has a clear vision on how to service our children.
And, you know, like I said earlier, this is, this is gonna open up a can, it is, because it's coming, it's coming to light, I guess you would say.
But I think if we had, um, good policies in place that, you know, they're, they can look at them and then go from there. But if we don't have policies, it's like they're just doing what they think is right, so.
And I believe we have a year to get it done, so we have, we have, we have enough time to get it done to move forward, so, because we're not gonna get it done. I mean, it's already in their bylaws already that they can do this, so we just need to, they just, they just need clarification.
Yeah, they, they have it now, so.
Yeah.
Alright, next up on the agenda is the flags. Do you wanna do individual?
For, for just.
Just consensus?
I think it's, uh, just the motion for.
A motion.
Flag donation to the.
A motion to for, we'll just do both of them in one motion for, the no, donation for the, for the, um, the Bemidji, um, what do you call it, City Council Building, I think Mayor, Mayor, uh, what's his name, Maury?
And.
Dan's the mayor, no?
No, no, no. Mayor Prince, and then also for the, and also for what was the other one?
We have a Beltrami County letter from.
Okay, okay. No, no, we'll do the flag for.
Flag.
City of Bemidji.
Motion.
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Annie. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next up is support letter for the Beltrami County Jail support letter. Any discussion on this?
I apologize, everyone. I, uh, I didn't provide the letter. I can read it for you guys, for you guys' consideration. It's rather short. If you guys would like that.
Go ahead.
It's addressed to Beltrami County Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Ernie Vital. Dear Sheriff Vital, it is the Whiter's Reservation's pleasure to write a letter of support for the new Beltrami County Jail project. Whiter's Reservation has Native American enrolled members that are integral part of your community. The Whiter's Reservation is intrigued by the promising changes ahead with your proposed jail project to both ensure safety of inmates and the public, along with the programming that will assist inmates on their high needs. The Whiter's Reservation is very interested in the programming within a new facility that is committed to evidence-based practices with regard to programming for clients and hopeful that cognitive behavioral pro- programming is implemented. Cognitive behavioral programs have demonstrated significant reductions in recidivism among the Native American incarcerated population. I am hoping that the new Beltrami County Jail model will allow for Native American culture and teaching along with substance abuse treatment and medical and mental health care throughout their incarceration. The Whiter's Reservation is in support of your proposed jail project. The proposed jail is a great opportunity to increase services to achieve our goal to reduce recidivism among the Native American population incarcerated in Beltrami County. That's Mi- Michael Chair, Michael Fairbanks, Chairman, Whiter Reservation Business Committee.
Questions on that letter?
Motion, Chairman.
Motion by Michael LaRocque for the support letter.
Second.
Second by.
Second.
Henry. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Alright, guys, well, I'd just say, i- is there anything else that we, we're missing? Well, we're gonna go into executive session. We'll motion that before we go up, and I wanna say thank you, appreciate it, uh, you're gonna have a safe holiday. I know we're coming up on, uh, Christmas here, so make sure and take care, drive safe. Make which. Uh, motion to go into executive session.
Motion.
Motion by Annie.
Second.
Second by Henry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.